Check, check.
This is the first time.
It seems like they moved us closer.
They did to this thing over here.
Well, it seems like they were some.
They did. Okay, we're on air.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Call this meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Torren?
Yes.
Here. Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
And Mr. Loiseau?
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes from April eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion was approved, uh, as stated, excuse me.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. One housekeeping item is we have appeal number two six three five in case anybody's here seeing no one is. Just want to make sure that everybody knows variance request by Robbie McLaughlin, twenty-nine Vesper Street, assessors map U one parcel nineteen has been tabled for this evening. And let's go into the drafts for the written decisions for appeals on March fourteenth, two eighteen. Appeal number two six three two, Tim and Jane Gallagher and Barry and Linda Crisman. Need a motion on that to approve our findings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Appeal number twenty-six twenty-two, Anthony D'Amito, motion for approval of our findings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Appeal number twenty-six thirty-three, Jeremy and Karen Grandin. Motion to approve our findings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Appeal number twenty-six thirty-three, Jeremy and Karen Grandin. Motion to approve our findings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I would just as a point of order, um, before approving each of those, um, findings and conclusions, it probably would be appropriate to ask the board members if they have had time to review all.
Okay. Being, being that said, has everybody had a chance to review the three appeals that we had and what we have decided or decisions?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you, sir. All right, first matter on the agenda is six month extension request by Charming Village Chapel LLC for appeal twenty-six seventeen, special exception twenty-six eighteen, a practical difficulty variance for four fifty County Road, approved on December thirteenth, two thousand and seven, it's two thousand and seventeen, excuse me. Does anybody have any questions on this? I know, I believe everybody was here, but maybe our newest member. Does anybody have anything further on it, or?
Just circumstances behind the extension?
Do we know the circumstances behind it?
In the letter.
Okay.
Nothing beyond that?
I don't have a copy of the letter myself.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a letter.
Yeah, they just need time to do a traffic study and they want to do it during busy season. Rather than during the winter when no one's there.
Okay.
Nothing beyond what's written?
Yeah, as long as there's nothing beyond what's written, then we should be good. Um, I think the traffic study is a good idea down there.
Absolutely.
Definitely warranted.
Great, especially how close to the road is to that intersection. Certainly would help.
It's huge. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve that or further discussion?
Motion to approve the extension of appeal number, I don't see it, sorry.
Twenty-six seventeen.
Four fifty County Road for a six month extension.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous? We just need to reaffirm what we found on this. All right, appeal number twenty-six thirty-four, a special exception request by Kenneth Beasley, three twenty-four Gorham Road, assessors map R thirty-four, parcel four C. Please take the podium, sir. If you have anything with you for borrowing or anything, you can certainly use these or write there.
Yeah, it's the same thing you've got, same thing you've got on the screen. You'll probably see that better.
Okay. Just state your name and address and go into what you're looking to do. We are reaffirming this from our last meeting, so.
My name is Ken Beasley. Um, I'm the owner of property at three twenty-four Gorham Road in Scarborough. I've been a general contractor for thirty, forty years and I'm moving into a niche in selling sunrooms. And what I want to do is take a small portion of my property and be able to put a showroom and my displays on, on my property.
And we have further information in our packets, some pictures and things that you've given us from the last time we met?
Correct.
Would you like to just go over any information as to what you may have for new that you're doing or anything you may have changed?
Um, I, I did change. Um, I think originally I taught three structures and, um, I downsized that to just two, two portable displays.
Okay. When we met last, I thought there was discussion about one of the solar units being there and then another unit, if I remember correctly, where you were going to have your office. Is that incorrect, or?
Several years ago, I got a permit and I put a greenhouse up and that was sixteen by twenty-four. And in that permit, I was going to put a structure in front of that greenhouse, which was going to be the party room, et cetera, et cetera. And I haven't built that structure. So if you look at the print and you'll see where it says greenhouse slash storage. I only use the greenhouse for a couple of months of the, of the year and outside of that, it's just basically storage. So I want to take and convert that slab in front of the greenhouse into my showroom where I could, you know, meet with customers, et cetera, et cetera.
Can you do that one?
I can't do it on that one because it doesn't show up.
I guess I can turn around.
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, yeah, questions?
A question. Um, on photograph C three, thanks for submitting the photographs. I really appreciate it. Gives you quite much a clearer idea of what's going on. On photograph C three.
Yep.
Can you point out which one is the greenhouse that you have right now? Is it the building in the back behind the, behind the items covered with the blue tarp, sort of a gray building with a white roof?
Uh, let me get there.
Yep.
I've got them up on the screen, Ken, if that helps.
Oh, you do? Okay, that, that's okay. So the, the building you see to the far left is one of the portable displays. And the greenhouse is just behind that blue tarp you see there and just in front of that, just in front of that is where the slab is. It's just on the other side of those logs that you see there.
Are there slabs for both, the greenhouse and the?
Yeah, the slab is, is continuous underneath the greenhouse, yes.
Okay, what about the solar room that's there? I'm assuming that's what that is. That's a solar room.
The, the sunroom?
Yeah.
That's portable. That's, that's on six by six skids.
So the only slab we have is the slab that's underneath the greenhouse?
The greenhouse and the, the building I want to construct, yes, which is.
Front of the greenhouse.
Pardon me?
In front of the greenhouse.
In front of the greenhouse, right. It's actually attached to the greenhouse.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so there's two slabs there now?
No, it's one slab.
Okay.
Then originally I poured it as one pour because that was going to originally be all used for the greenhouse.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure procedurally. I have a couple of questions that kind of just spurred from this picture. And again, I'm not sure how relevant it is to the application of you wanting to run a business there. It's in regards to the business that you're currently running there. Because I mean, I look at this picture and it looks like there's a lot of stuff going on already in your yard. And, um, I mean, one of the qualifications for running a home business is having, um, you know, so many employees. Do you currently have employees with the business that you're running there?
I do not.
So no employees are coming and going?
Correct.
Okay, and so then I guess, trying to understand, I guess we went into the logging a little bit when we were here last month and I'm trying to figure out exactly what.
I have, I have a portable sawmill, um, as a hobby and those are some of the logs you see in the picture where all that will be moved behind a privacy fence.
Privacy fence.
If you look at the drawing, you can see the, the fence drawn behind the display area. So the area that I was dedicating to the sunrooms is roughly ninety by hundred and thirty, I believe. Yeah, ninety by a hundred and thirty. So in that space will be none of the hobby stuff, none of the sawmill, none of the, none of that stuff.
So as you pull in from the road, the only things that should be on display either from Gorham Road or as you're pulling in should be items related to just?
Sun space.
The sun space. Okay, so all the logs and the debris that's around the yard right now, that's going to be completely removed or concealed behind?
Correct.
Okay. And can you point out, sorry, again, real quick, the, the fence on your drawing, um, that you're proposing?
Um, if you, if you look behind, um, the line, the measurement line of one thirty, you'll see increments with around, with around posts, square posts.
Uh, to, to the left of that, okay.
Right, correct, behind the sunspace area.
Okay. And what style of fence are you planning on using there?
Uh, it's probably going to be a wooden fence. Um, it will be a privacy and not a semi-private.
Okay, so there will be gaps or anything for people to view through or anything like that? Okay.
I'm sorry. So that's just a lot of wood. And so what do you do with, do you just have a collection or do you sell stuff? I guess I'm not sure what exactly, what, what is going on there.
Well, a lot of it started out the inside of my shop. Um, it's just fiberglass insulation. And a lot of the stuff I've been cutting, I'm going to use to sheath the inside of my shop. Um, some of the stuff, you know, I'd use to build this building that I want to put in front of the greenhouse. And some of the stuff I give to my brother who sells it at flea markets.
Yeah, I, again, I mean, I'm just, you know, I think one of the things you're saying is, oh, I'm surrounded by businesses. But I mean, the businesses you're surrounded by do not look like this. And I mean, you know, I, sunroom sounds like a great idea, but if it's conforming to the businesses next to it and it looks like that.
There are no businesses next to it.
Oh, I thought there were two businesses next to it.
I, I take that back. There's a veterinary hospital on my left.
Right.
And then the golf course is two house lots up from me.
Okay.
I think there's a dotted daycare or something right down there too, isn't it?
Oh, that's way further down the street.
Further down, okay. All right, let's, let's go into the standards for special exceptions and we can address those again. We'll go down through the questions. You can give us your responses.
Yep.
We can have discussion on them and then the board can have questions and then we can have a vote on that. And we'll go into the home, home based occupation after that.
Okay.
Okay. The proposed use will not create unsanitary, unhealthy conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water or other aspects of its design of operation.
There'd be no, um, no water facilities on site.
Okay. B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions when, when added to the existing or foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Um, I have ample parking and turnaround space on my lot and I don't expect a lot of traffic.
Okay. The proposed use does not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Um, it's more of an office space. There's no, no fabrication or anything going on.
Okay. The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on the water supplies.
Then again, we're not doing anything on site except just showing what we have for product.
Okay. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures and density of development.
Um, it would just be the, the displays that are there now. Um, we're not looking to add anything else.
Okay. If located in a shoreline zone, are you located in a shoreline zone?
No.
So we really don't need to address that. Uh, the applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site or proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use.
My wife and I bought the property in, um, ninety-nine.
Okay, thank you. The applicant has a technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section.
There again, I've been doing remodeling for forty years, so I'm wiping the pharmacy, so that's not an issue.
Okay, so any special conditions we put on it, you have the financial means to take care of it?
Yep.
Okay. Um, proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect, respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
Um, it's, you know, daylight hours and I don't expect a lot of traffic.
What times are you thinking you're going to be open?
Eight o'clock to five o'clock.
Thank you for going over those. Just another public hearing, I guess. Are there any others?
There was none.
Like to open it up to the public hearing, seeing that there's not available or anyone here? Open it up to questions in the board for the questions that we just went through, if anybody has any.
I would like to get some clarifications on the sketches, the sketch that you pulled together. Uh, there's a dimension ninety degrees to the right side of the property. What's that referencing to? Uh, ninety feet to the right side of the property?
Um, that's just showing the area that would be sunspace only. So from the edge of my property over, you know, I'm assuming ninety feet by a hundred and thirty feet, that block of space.
So that right hand side is your property line?
Yes.
Okay, so you need a fifteen foot setback on that side as well, so you won't be within that?
Correct.
Based on the scale? And it looks like the portable display, if I have a scale, it is at least twenty, thirty feet or so from the right side property.
My driveway at that point where the ninety intersects?
Yeah.
Is fifteen feet from the property. My driveway's twenty feet wide.
Okay, so it looks like you're, say, roughly forty-five feet from the sideline.
I think that telephone pole that you see in front of the portable display, the eight by fourteen, was at thirty-seven feet.
Okay, and it's very deep in the property. Uh, I would say something like a hundred and forty or fifty feet from the front, front, uh, property line.
It's a hundred, it's a hundred and thirty feet to the, to approximately to the backside of the portable display.
So clearly that's within the, the boundaries. I'm just putting it on record because it's not written. It's a scale. And the same thing with the front portable display. That looks like it's the front edge, say sixty feet from the front property line.
Correct. That dosh dated line is a fifty foot setback.
And again, somewhat centered in that ninety foot wide, so it's off the right side by sixty, seventy feet?
Correct.
So I don't see any issues with the placement of any of the buildings on the property?
Anybody else have any questions?
I do. Um, and Brian, can we go back to the aerial view map, please? Just for my own clarification. So, um, I see the existing greenhouse there now, um, directly to the left. Uh, I think it's lot three twenty-two. I saw your tax map earlier. Is that your property? Um, what's that, three twenty-two?
No, that, that's not my property. Where, yeah, that is my property.
Okay.
So three twenty-four is my property. Where you see the, the gravel driveway?
Mm-hmm.
The paved driveway is my neighbor.
Okay.
And the gravel driveway goes all the way, all the way up into the woods, correct?
My driveway goes all the way up to my house.
And that's your house there on the back?
That's my house in the back, yes.
Okay. Um, and your proposed fence to place all of the wood, the portable sawmill and everything else. If we're looking at this map here.
It would go, it would go down from back edge of my shop.
Bottom here, yeah.
Yeah, the, the big building. From there, all the way down to the pine trees by the road.
Mm-hmm.
And then back across the pine trees and then back up behind sunspace.
Okay.
Approximately height of the fence?
Uh, I haven't actually determined that, but it's going to be six foot anyhow.
Okay.
Okay.
What are you planning on putting back in there?
Uh, the sawmill, the sawmill will go back in there. Um, a lot of the stuff that's there now is going to go away. You know, being I'm downsized, I, I won't need this, you know, a lot of the staging and that type of stuff. There's an old trailer in there that's going to go away. My estimator wants a trailer, so we'll do a little house trading. He's going to do a little work for me. He gets a trailer, that type of thing.
So you're going to clean up the area where you're going to have your business?
I'm going to clean up the area where sunspace is, plus clean up the area that, um, where my hobby takes place. Get it more organized and more appropriate. Right now it's a disaster.
I, I have a question on Brian. Can you go one more up, please? Right there. Bring it up a little bit more. If you can, sorry, so we can see the gravel and stuff down below, I guess, come down. There we go. Sorry. Um, with this picture, it looks like there's some stuff in there right now. I mean, when you're removing this, are you going to create any like of other stuff flowing into your driveway or flowing out of your driveway from the things that are up above that are being removed? It looks like you've kind of got, you've got gravel down there and I don't know, it looked like there was some gray or white stuff that was in the front of the driveway as well.
No, there's, um, going up the driveway, you have a paved apron, uh, that it turns to gravel. A lot of that stuff you see there now has been cleaned up already. Um, then there's a pile of rocks right there that you see right in the middle of the screen. That's a pile of rocks.
Okay.
And then the gravel parking is just on the other side of that pile of rocks.
It just looks like with the driveway, it looks like there's some gaps where things are running down, kind of like through water.
Then, well, it was raining that day when I took the picture.
Right, and that's, that was my question when you're going to getting all that other stuff removed back there. It's been sitting there for a while. Is anything else going to come running down?
No, there's, there's nothing, there's nothing there that would be, uh, toxic to the environment anyhow. It's just, uh, you know, basically gravel and, and the, the logs are the biggest thing there.
Okay. And the other thing you said in when we looked at three twenty-two to three twenty-four for the lots, we were going to the compatible in the neighborhood. You had mentioned that there's really not a business there, so, I mean, you got one neighbor there and then you got trees on the other side. I'm not sure how far down we go for the neighbor. How, how far down is the veterinary hospital from you?
Uh, one house lot over.
Two, what? Two lots? Okay.
One lot. There, there's a lot right next to me is Bailey's and then it's a veterinary hospital.
Is that residential?
Bailey's, yes.
Okay, so you got two residents on either side of you and probably residents directly in front of you, right?
Um, no, there's no, there's, there's a resident directly across from me at an angle on the corner of New Road and that's it.
Yeah. And there is a gentleman, I think, one of those houses, and maybe I get down a little bit further, that does. And there is a gentleman, I think, one of those houses, maybe I get down a little bit further, that does honey or something like that to bees, I think.
That's not the first white farm you see, that's that one.
Okay, so he does have a business there in his home? Any other questions from the board?
I guess my, my only concern and, um, Ken, and with all respect, it's just, it's, it's kind of a mess there right now and just for, as far as, uh, when we're going through, like, part E, the visual impact for compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood, um, I'm personally probably gonna recommend that, you know, everything be sort of cleaned up, the fences erected and everything before the, uh, the displays will go in, um, just for the sake of the neighbor who's immediately next door to you there. Uh, and also just from the, the sight from the road. Uh, that's just my only concern that I have.
The neighbor immediately, uh, next to me comes over and helps with the sawmill. So he's contributing to the mess. I, I mean, I, I, I'd be the first one to tell you that it's a, it's a disaster at the moment and, and, uh, you know, ninety percent of the time, every time after the snow melts away, there's always a mess to clean up. But it's, it's, right now, it's totally unacceptable to have, uh, potential clients come and look at the mess. It doesn't project a good image for my company to do that. So, you know, even a dummy would not wanna have all that stuff hanging around.
Sure, sure. Um, how long approximately has it been in that current state?
Um, well, it was, it was cleaner before it snowed out, so if I had to throw it down, I'd say maybe a year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We're gonna talk about the home occupation?
We will. We're gonna get into that after the special exceptions.
You were gonna vote on this before the home occupation?
I was gonna vote on the special exceptions portion and then go to the home occupation.
And the special exception is what, just allowing the business in that area?
Yeah, and then we have to go to the home occupation to... We can certainly vote on them both at the same time if you want to. We just need to go through the home occupation questions now?
I, I think you can review them both and then we vote for both that, after, is that fair?
Yeah.
And then if any concerns, connect the two sides and then we'll-
Home occupation, section nine, page, page thirty-seven to forty-one. These and five here. All right, we're gonna go through the questions for home occupation for you as well. And we'll just need you to answer those as well, and then we'll probably have some questions about the home occupation and then we'll be voting on the two.
Yep.
The occupation or profession shall be carried out unholy within the principal building or within a building accessory thereto.
Correct.
The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Correct.
No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation.
There again, correct.
Exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions under section twelve, signed regulations, subsection E. You can have a sign if you want, and it has to be placed within a certain amount of feet from the home. I don't know how that works, if his home's way up in the woods, so.
No, it's just a setback from the room.
Okay. There shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or vari- variation from the residential character of the principal bill, principal building except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. The prohibition shall not apply to the storage of lobster traps. I don't, that might be the one thing that you don't have there. So, are you okay with that?
Um, I have two dis- I have two displays, I need-
Well, we're gonna, I think we're gonna get into materials and other things when we go through this question, so... From what we're seeing, that's probably something we're gonna have some questions on.
Okay.
No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare. You said the shop is, the wood shop is gonna be in the back and that generally doesn't produce any of these things?
Correct.
The traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood.
Correct.
In addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirement of the dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and the vehicles of the maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak operating hours. How many people do you think you're gonna be having during your operating hours?
One, one, one couple at a time.
And you have sufficient parking there, once everything's cleaned up for them to come in, turn around without backing into anything-
Yes.
-onto that road? Home occupation may utilize not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit floor area, provided that for the purpose of this calculation, unfinished basement and attic spaces are not included.
Correct.
And I, I think we might have a question on that as well, 'cause I remember when we were looking at the two sections on that one slab, it may have been close to that number, the twenty percent, but we'll definitely have some questions on that for you. Unfinished attic and basement and space within the accessory building totaling not more than one thousand square feet of the floor area. So that's what we're looking at, for the square, square footage that you'll be able to be within.
And, and we're under the thousand.
I'll, I'll have a question for that probably when we get a little bit further in it. Home occupations may include retail shops subject to the following limitations. The total area devoted to the retail sales is limited to four hundred square feet and must be fully enclosed within the building.
Yeah, that's, uh, in front of the greenhouse, which is three hundred and... Two hundred, two hundred and fifty-two square feet.
Okay. The total area devoted to retail sales is limited to four hundred square feet. Uh, the sale of the product is limited to products or articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises and seafood caught or harvested off the premises by the persons who reside in the dwelling unit or by one employee permitted under paragraph three. So, uh, that's, the sale of products is limited to products or articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises.
None of that is, everything's done at the customer's house.
Does that... You're not a fisherman or lobsterman, we oughta go, oughta gone over that. Motor vehicle repairs, you're probably not gonna have any of those there either.
Nope.
So those are the questions for the home occupation. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the applicant on these?
Just to reiterate one thing, uh, under ten B, so the, the sale of the sunrooms, of the sunhouses, they're going to be done, constructed at the, um, each customer's home or location where they wanna have it built and-
Correct.
Material brought in will be brought directly to, I'll just call it the job site, it won't be stored.
Material, material comes to my property and then I transport it from my property with scheduling to their property.
Okay.
Where is it stored on your apartment?
Uh, in the, um, um, in the, the greenhouse slash storage.
So if you're using the greenhouse as storage, does that now become part of the accessory unit that he's using? Is that-
I think that's what we ran into it last time, it does, and it probably puts him over.
But it's still under the thousand square feet.
I think we looked at it last time, we were over that.
Well, in the staff comments, Mr. Chairman, I tallied that up. The total area of the fixed buildings is seven hundred and fifty-six square feet. You got three hundred and eighty-four and two fifty-two, and then you've got a covered deck that's ten by twelve.
I'm sorry, is that including the portable displays?
Yes.
They're not fixed buildings, those are portable.
I think that's what we had gotten into it last time.
Yeah. I think if you even add up the square footage on the portable displays, it's still under a thousand.
Um, no, I think it comes over a thousand.
Yeah, it's eleven fifty-six, you got them.
I think that the portable displays is a, is a separate subject unto itself.
Yes.
What do regulations say about a showroom? The square feet?
Under four hundred.
Well, you got a lot more than four hundred square feet, you got two portable displays, plus your showroom. You got, uh, six hundred square feet.
Well, the showroom would be the two hundred and fifty-six square feet.
Yeah, what about the displays? They're showroom, showroom items, too.
Well, they're, they're displays, they're not showrooms.
So what's the purpose of the displays, then?
So the customer can actually see what the product is to be put on their house.
Right. But they, so that's an extension of the showroom, though, in a sense, if, if you look at it that way. I think that's where we're all thinking.
What are you gonna show them in the showroom?
The, the different products. I, oh, in, in the showroom itself is where we would sit and, and, uh, go over the details. Uh, I have railings, I have-
The showroom is your office?
Um, no, it's more a place to meet with my customers, to sit down and meet with the customers.
And you'd have more, like, options to pick from and things like that, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Austin, I forget, I guess my question on this is, maybe you can clarify, maybe we don't have a good answer for this. Total area of retail sales, how do those, how do those play into this? For the displays? Are they, is that considered an area of retail sales? Because he's meeting with people there and he's showing them the-
I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay.
Can you read the fifth question on our home occupation one more time, please?
Sure. The fifth question, there's, there shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character or the principal building except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to storage of lobster, lobster traps. I think that's where we're getting into five and ten. A, you can't have it both ways.
Have, have we reviewed the district regulation?
Have we?
That's my question. It's saying, based on the verbiage, is it district regulation? And I don't know what that is.
I don't either.
Well, the district is the, uh, rural farm district.
Okay.
And so, if there are any restrictions in the rural farm district, in other words, if it's, excuse me, if it's not, if it's not expressly permitted, then it's deemed to be prohibited the way the ordinance reads. There are certain districts that do allow outdoor displays in outdoor storage, and there are some that don't. Obviously, for most residential properties, we don't get into, you know, if people store a lawnmower outside or, you know, something that's purely accessory to the structure, we don't, we don't quibble over those kinds of things.
Right.
Mr. Lloyd, I think it, it, with an accessory use like this, it's-
The reason I'm, the reason I'm asking, 'cause right now, if you count the displays as, uh, part of the square footage, he's over by thirty-six feet. My calculation puts him at ten thirty-six with all the buildings. So, I'm wondering what's allowed and what's not allowed under the RF? Because if it doesn't mention it, then it's up to our judgment. If it mentions it, then it could take it off or put it on the plate.
It's section fourteen, page one of three.
What, what number?
I think that's what you're looking for, section XIB. A.
For the RF.
Yeah.
For the rural farming district, permitted uses. I mean, I can go over them. Uh, commercial agriculture is subject to the performance standards of section IX. Commercial animal husbandry. Okay, I have no idea what that means. Farm stands, agricultural, agricultural products, agricultural processing facilities, bed and breakfasts, single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, single multi-family dwelling, residential recreational facility, nursing homes, family daycare, golf course, municipal buildings, place of worship, day camp, forestry, commercial stables, wetlands, creations, accessory units. Special exceptions, so public utilities, cemeteries, extract, extractive industries, including gravel pits and quarries, camping and tenting, mobile home parks, home occupations, group daycare, uh, group day home care, daycare centers, and non-commended models, aviation flying fields. And then there's adjunct uses, place of worship, telecommunications, and hospices. And kennels, and veterinarian pet care facilities, and agricultural, which we see in this area, 'cause we have some of that that came up with the doggy daycare and the golf course.
Yeah.
And the bees. So those are permitted uses. So I guess I'll let you expand on that, Mr. Lloyd, as to what you're thinking.
Well, my thought process, if you look at the square footages, it's around putting a business in your residence, right? This is an exterior dwelling to the residence.
Mm-hmm.
So, how you calculate that square footage is in question to me, since it's not part of that dwelling. How do you say a percentage of the dwelling when it's not part of that dwelling? So do you look at the slab that makes up the greenhouse and the, uh, front showroom as a secondary structure? And that is now basing your square footage on how big the showroom can be? And then you don't allow the display, 'cause it's gonna clearly put it over the number? Or do you look at the dwelling on the property, even though it's not in it, and use that as part of the calculation? Which doesn't make sense to me. So, I'm just trying to figure out what's the basis for this and, you know, try, trying to straight-face test it.
Mm-hmm. I understand completely. Mr. Austin, Steph's going through his calculator here. Do you wanna answer any question on that?
Um, I was just trying to consider whether or not the, because we've established that the greenhouse storage, the showroom, and the covered deck, which, by the way, when you cover a deck, it's no longer a deck. It's, it's a porch. Uh, we've established that those tallied up are under a thousand square feet. So what I was curious about was whether or not, whether or not portable displays could actually somehow exist inside the space that is the greenhouse storage. Uh, instead of having a greenhouse there, if that was a stick-built structure, per se, with some doors, wide doors on it, if those could come inside, so it was all on the one thousand square foot footprint, then you still, you still gotta square with the, what, four hundred square feet of retail space? But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I would necessarily consider the displays as retail space the same way that a mom-and-pop store or somebody displaying baskets that they roll or some, I don't know.
And, and I agree with that. If someone's selling sheds and he's got two sitting on the property as displays, that's not part of his showroom or, that is items that they're trying to sell and show an example of. And then you've got a book inside that shows, here's the forty different designs I've got. I got a couple out there, so you can see standard construction, see the details in person, right? So, I look at the displays as a separate item, but if you're gonna store equipment in the greenhouse, which it sounds like you said that on record, that counts as square footage. The covered deck and showroom add up to seven fifty-six altogether, if my calculations are correct. That's under the thousand, but it's really around the displays, which is another two hundred and eighty feet. And seeing as, their displays, I don't consider, that's an item. That's vegetables on the side of the road, sitting in a stand, to me. Now, I wouldn't want you to put more than two, to be honest with you, and, and you're not asking for that. So, um, I am okay saying the displays don't count as square footage.
Mm-hmm. But then how does that relate us back to question five of the home occupation? There shall be no exterior displays.
Now, you said you have two, two, two displays?
Correct.
And that you're gonna have those open when you have your business open? I guess last month, didn't you say you bring those to trade shows sometimes?
Correct.
But you do, are gonna be using them as well when you have customers come to your house? Or can they just be put away?
Um, well, the idea is, is able to show them the space that would be on their house, so the answer to your question, yes, the doors would not be locked.
So you'd have the displays out?
Yes.
Now, right now, you move those displays around on a trailer, correct?
Correct.
If he leaves them on the trailer, if he, well, you don't have a second trailer. If he were to have a second trailer and had those two trailers parked there, and people could get up on those trailers and look at the display, does that make it any different? And then when he wants to take somebody's fare or whatever to display them, he dries them off the property.
I think we addressed this, I don't know how many years ago, when we were looking at the other property on Gorham Road down by Corners for exterior items. And that was administrative appeal, but we addressed those things being outside this exterior and requested that they be put inside. And I think we're seeing, very similar to this by the yard, the yards are very similar as to what they look like.
Yeah.
I guess my concern is, in that scenario, if we have, you know, the two displays on trails that can be taken, going back to the variance application, letter E, proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size and visual impact. And the visual impact thing is, is getting me a little bit, because it's, you know, just having something stored on a trailer, like, coming in and out of the yard, doesn't, for me, doesn't meet that requirement. Um, just with, within comparison to the other homes that are here. There aren't any, there aren't any things on trailers being moved in or out. If- That's all I have for right now.
Any other questions from the board? No other questions. I'll go to the questions for finding a fact and motions. Special exception, we'll go right into the letter A. The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, water, or other aspects of its design of operation. I would request that if you do make statements, which I encourage you to do, that we put them down as findings of fact, so that we can be very clear as to what we're finding for facts on this. I guess I'll stop. Right down, Mr. Lloyd.
Yeah, and under item one, I don't see any difference between how he operates today. The number of people that are going to be going to site will not create more mud or runoff or silt. So I don't believe there's going to be a change there. I don't think it's going to affect the environment.
I agree with Mr. Lloyd. I don't think it'll make a difference.
I agree as well. In the question saying reason of sewage disposal, emissions to air or water, there isn't any plans for plumbing to this building, is that correct? That, that satisfies my...
Which one are they doing?
What's up?
Which question are you doing?
We're doing questioning under special exceptions, standard for special exceptions.
Which one? A?
A, yes. I, I had a question about this just because of what I saw in the dirt and stuff. You've addressed that. You've given me information that nothing will create anything that's unsafe or unsanitary going forward from what is there. With that being said, I, I trust you that we will get that done, and there won't be anything that's going to be a detriment as far as unsafe or unsanitary conditions.
That's correct.
That would be the facts I'm basing on, is what you're telling me, that all those things will not create...
Correct.
Any, any further.
Yep.
Please.
Yeah. I, I agree with that. Not that I know where you guys are.
And I agree. I would agree as well.
Thank you. All in favor of A being met? Unanimous? Five, yes. B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity of, start right down, the same spot.
Yeah, the applicant stated his previous view with us that he was expecting one or two people once in a while during the week, so you're probably talking five or six visits at max a week. So it's a very low, low frequency, and I think it fits.
Yeah, I think you've demonstrated that it won't really be any different than what it is.
I agree. It's a low frequency of vehicles coming and going.
Again, my question to you is, I asked if there's actually a way for people to pull into the site, turn around. You assured me that you will have the access to that, so that people don't have to back out. That would be a nightmare.
Correct.
So as long as there's space for them to not hit anything, be able to drive in, drive out, and back, back out and actually drive out onto Gorham Road, I'm fine with that.
And Mr. Chair, looking at the sketch that was given for this application, there's a forty-four foot wide area where you have the road next to parking, potentially, potentially parking spots, and he could put eight to ten cars in that side, left side of the forty-four feet.
Thank you for extending on that.
I don't, I don't really have any hangup with that. I mean, there's so much traffic on one fourteen. I mean, four or five cars a week, not going to break the bank on that maybe, so I'm all right with that.
I agree.
All in favor of B being met? Unanimous, five? C, the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. We'll start right down with Dan again.
Yeah, I do not see fire or police hazards being caused as a result of this. The ability to turn around on the property takes away my biggest issue.
I agree.
Yep, he stated that, uh... I'm sorry, we're on letter G, is that correct?
We're on letter C.
Excuse me. I apologize. The, yes, I agree in that there is no need for additional file or fire or police protection in this area outside of what's already being provided.
I mean, the proposed use being compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood, you do have some that are around. You have veterinary hospital to one side, you have the doggy daycare down the road a little bit, you have the bee operation where they're doing the honey pretty much across from you. So I would base it based on that. I mean, it's already a nightmare for public safety. If there's an accident there anyways, I don't think this is going to be any different than what is already there. And you've already got businesses there that would generate the same amount of traffic you're going to generate.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think there's any additional impact on any services that we provide.
Agreed.
All in favor of C being met? Unanimous, five, oh. The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
I agree. He, he meets the requirement there. There, he has a gravel driveway, that's not a change. He's going to be cleaning up his site, which is going to help, so it will only get better from this point forward, so. It's good, it meets.
I agree with Mr. Lloyd.
I agree. It's from my question that I asked earlier, there's not going to be any water supply or plumbing coming to this new, new site.
Yeah, I don't see any sedimentation or erosion. Again, I go back to moving the items that are there that would have created that, but if you can assure me that's not going to, then I don't see anything further that this would do.
I don't see any problem. I, I think the biggest thing is that he's got to clean up his yard.
Oh, I agree.
It's, uh, lord knows what's in there.
Oh, I know exactly what's in there.
Some of those pictures are a little bit horrifying, though. Other than that, I don't have any problem.
You want to agree with Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of D being met? Unanimous, five, oh. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity of other structures, and density of development.
Yes, I think it fits within the, the use of the RF zone. You have a mix of residential and businesses, that's clear from the aerial map. It's in, it's allowed in this proposed use.
I struggle with this one. I think Mr. Hubert had commented on the visual impact as well. I mean, I think Brian had said that you were perfectly allowed to be doing what you're currently doing at your property regarding the logging, but now, you know, you're coming before us with this mess in your front yard, saying, hey, give me permission to do a business where you're wanting to do exterior displays. So I do not think that this has been met.
For me, the applicant stated that he is going to clean up the debris in front of the yard that's not related to the sun, the proposed sunspace display showroom and greenhouse storage. And my only recommendation is that the variance is allowed contingent upon concealing all of the material and debris unrelated, either cleaned up or concealed, anything unrelated to the sunspace displays that's visible from the road.
On this one, yeah. The bee place that sells the honey, the farm down there, is probably going to generate about the same as far as visual impact as this is. I mean, it's, it's a business. I mean, if you're cleaning up everything and all that stuff's gone, you'll look very similar to what they are. But if it's all there, not even close. I do have a little bit of a visual impact problem with the screen houses for the displays. I mean, I can get into those and the other aspect of this, but I, I don't quite like, I've been down that road numerous times, and I don't quite like the impact that it has had. And it's had this impact for quite a while, so, I mean, if you're going to clean it up, that's great. But I, I, I think it's going to stick out a little bit more. You said, what, is it going to be a six-foot fence? It's going to go down and around, it's going to come around the front as well?
Right, and this, this, I mean, the logs are not neatly piled at the moment. There's an abnormal amount of logs on the property at the moment. You know, all that, all that's going to go away. And I, you know, I've been picking at it already. If you saw this property a month ago, I wouldn't be staying here.
With what you've told me, and I'm trusting your word on this, that it's all going to be gone, as long as those screen houses are pushed in and the fence is up, are you also going to put the fence up on that side as well by the screen houses, so that it's not visually impacted from that side of the road as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going to be pretty much around the property except for the driveway?
All right, I'm, I'm...
Fencing's going to go by your neighbor that's on the three twenty-two.
Going down my property line through my neighbor.
Yeah.
Going across the front.
Yeah.
And then I was going back up on the backside of the, so the sunspace space.
Okay, are you going to put a fence, piece of fence on that side of your driveway as well, so that the sunrooms are kind of in past?
So you asked me if I'm going to put the, the sunspace behind a fence from, between, fence between the sunrooms and the street?
Yes.
At this point, I hadn't planned on doing that.
Well, I would probably want that for my decision to be a yes on this.
What is it you're requesting?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Just, just if the fence, visual impact, you're going to take the entire visual impact up? That would be my suggestion. Are you willing to do that?
Say, say that one more time, Mr. Chair. I just wanted clarification as to what you're asking for.
If, if he's going to put the fence up and he's going to go down both sides?
He, he's creating a U-shaped fence, which is to the property side, property line on the left, U-shaped towards the front, and then comes up the center of the property. He wasn't going towards the north.
You're not going on the other side where those are going to be, where the displays are going to be.
Correct.
I would say no on this, then.
Can you explain that? You think the displays is too, is too much of a visual impact?
I do.
Okay.
I think it has been too much of a...
Okay. Can, can I also add a clarification here?
Sure.
I've heard a lot of, heard a lot of the board members complaining about the stored trees that are on the property that has nothing to do with the use of this. He happens to have stored trees in the area where he's doing this, has nothing to do with this display of what he's doing with these sunrooms. So please be careful. I know you might not like it. And I know it adds to the volume of stuff that's down there. I think you have a very valid stance on saying, let's move the displays to behind a fence, so it's less visual impact. Just be careful. I think you're treading in an area where you, this has nothing to do with the use he's proposing, so you might not like it, you might not like the way it looks. I'm not saying he doesn't have the right, but he has a right to live in whatever fashion he wants.
Yeah, that's why I haven't brought up the logs at all.
Please be careful.
I brought up the logs last time.
So, so I agree with your statement around...
Yeah.
The displays. You might want to extend that fence from horizontal, uh, horizontal, excuse me, from left to right. If you did that, you could put the displays behind that, and it would take away from that...
Yeah.
Visual density, and I understand why the chair might be saying that.
I'm just doing this based on my decision of what you proposed here. You're proposing to have those as displays. I think that's too much of a visual impact for the neighborhood.
I mean, personally, I just don't think it reflects well in the town or the board. If we're going to say, hey, you know, put your sunroof up when your whole front yard is a mess. And unfortunately, you know, me and someone else who also lives out in that neighborhood is impacted by someone with a similar situation, who, yes, it's allowed, but their neighbor's yard looks like a dump in the front. And so it's, I understand, maybe it doesn't follow the qualifications, but I'm just kind of saying generally to the board.
I mean, you keep, you keep going back to the mess. Yes, I know it's, I know it's a mess, okay? And it's all going to go away. I mean, I've been in business for forty years, and I do know that if I left a mess there and expect the customers to come to my house, the first thing they're going to look at is the mess in my dooryard and say, I'm not going to buy from this guy, he's a pig. So everything that you see out front there is going away.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I'm not addressing the mess at this point. What I'm addressing is, I'm addressing the displays. I think that's too visually impact on, on there. If you were, if you had a fence going on both sides...
Can I do a semi-private fence across the front?
What do you mean, like just a fence that goes across the front that just covers where those would be and not go up the backside?
No, I, I'm willing, you know, I still plan on going down the property line, across the pine trees, and then back up, so the backside of my sunspace space has total privacy from whatever happens behind that fence. What I'm asking is, you want me to hide all my displays behind the fence, okay? I can understand that. What I'm asking is, can that be a semi-private fence?
So it visually breaks it but doesn't block it?
Correct.
What size are you thinking of?
I, I have not think anything. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud, thinking out loud, trying to come up with a solution that everybody can agree with.
If you could, if you can see them, then it's a visual impact. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to make sure, if you're going to make sure that they're not in view, they can't be in view. They got to be hidden. Well, it's diff, how do you define, well, how do you define view? What, to, to these displays, what is it to the peak?
It's huge. It's like you're going to buy a car and sitting in the showroom.
No, I'm saying, what, what is the elevation to the peak of the display?
Oh, the elevations?
Yeah.
The, the, the portable display that's there now is almost twelve feet.
Okay, so to hide it, you'd have to have a sixteen-foot barricade fence. So when you say...
Visual impact.
Right? So what are you, what are you asking for? I mean, an eight-foot fence would block the majority of it, and you might see the peak coming above it, so. Is that acceptable? I just don't see this as a home occupation. And the further we dig into this...
But we're not doing home occupation yet, though. We're just doing special exceptions. We've got to go by just the special exceptions, right?
I understand that. I, I'm just, I'm just telling Rick where I'm coming from. Yeah, and there may be some interconnections from special exception to home occupation, right? There may be some common threads.
And normally, we don't open this up to you, sir, but I'm, I'm trying to work with you a little bit here. Normally, when, when we're done talking to you, we're done talking to you, so you can't address us unless you ask me specifically. But I'm trying to work with you a little bit and try to find out some more information. So we're giving you a little bit more leeway than we normally would, so, just, just for your instance. So your, your position on this is no?
Yeah. The visual impact is, yeah, I think there's visual impact. There is a visual impact, so I'm no on that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think one of the things that I kind of see from the positioning of where these portable displays is located, are located, is that it looks like that's kind of a means of advertising them, right? That, that first one, that the, the largest, the twelve by fourteen is, you know, right up, is closest to Gorham Road. And I kind of question why you wouldn't even try to just tuck it back in towards the back of the lot a little bit and minimize the frontage. But, so I think there's probably a purpose to you wanting to have them be seen, right? I, I, I guess my, my, two of my thoughts on this are is that we haven't received any neighborhood, you know, letter saying that they don't think that this is a positive or that this is, this is something that they object to. So that, that tells me that they're not concerned. Second thing, I, you know, looking at the pictures, I think that there is probably a likelihood that this is going to improve if you do this. I do think that you would clean up the yard, because I don't think you would have a chance of being successful at selling these without doing so. And I think you seem to realize that, so I don't have an objection on that. I would be really curious to... It would have been nice to see new pictures that showed it even further ahead from where it was last month when we, when we talked to you. You know, to see more cleanup that might have gone on or something like that.
Some has, but it's, it's not something that's a total visual.
Yeah.
I mean, the thing, the thing too with the displays is they're on wheels. I mean, it's up to you if you want to push them back into the yard and have them more off the road a little bit, so it doesn't create a visual impact. I mean, I'll let you answer that question before I take the vote on this. You've said they're both, one's on wheels and you're going to put the other one on wheels, right? They go to shows and things with you, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that if you were able to set them behind the greenhouse storage and showroom towards the back of the lot, you might have a better chance of getting things through. I, I don't know. I'm new here. You know, other than that, I, I see them as not much different than having a really large boat in your yard, you know, being on a trailer or something like that. And I think we have to be kind of cautious about passing too much judgment over, over the current condition of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I, that's, those are my only concerns.
Yeah, we have to look at it on the merits of what we're actually looking at. It's just this, this occupation for special exceptions first.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll allow you to answer that question. Would you be willing to move them back or put up a fence if that is something that would determine a no vote to be a yes vote potentially for you?
I'm flexible.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion to see if the applicant is willing to consider? If the fence on the right-hand side that now goes back towards the depth of the property, if it took a right turn and went towards the driveway just west of the covered deck? Thank you.
Doesn't give that to everybody.
Yeah, they'll only work on this one, I don't know.
Wrong way. Probably pointing at myself.
There you go.
If that fence were to come in this direction and come out to about right here, it would cover this display... If that fence were to come in this direction and come out to about right here, it would cover this display, and if you move this display back here
Exactly.
And you put in, say, an eight-foot fence, you'd still see the peaks, so you know they're there, but visually from the road, you'd see this fence and just see the peaks of these, would that be acceptable to the board? For breaking up the visual density out at the front of the property?
Ms. Shoup, would that change your opinion of visual impact?
Are we talking visual impact?
Yes, if that were to happen.
Yeah, the question is, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximities, proximity of other structures, and density of development. So really, this question's around visual impact and intense, intensity of use. It's trying to give it a little bit less visual impact at the front of his property.
I guess I will, I will call for the vote, Mr. Blas, did you have any?
I'd, I'd be all right with that.
Okay.
I would be as well, again, for me, it's just having everything so close to the road, so if the applicant is amenable to what Ms. Loizao proposed here, I would be fine with that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ken, what is the, what's, what's the construction of the showroom gonna be? That, that's on the pad, on the slab? Is that going to be a, a sunroom construction, or is that gonna be?
I haven't actually decided how that was gonna, what that was gonna be, whether it was gonna be sunroom materials, or what I was gonna do there. I was leaning towards a, a post and beam construction type thing. I, I guess what you're asking, if I'm willing to take the twelve-by-fourteen display and stick it in the corner up behind the greenhouse?
Yes, and put a s- some type of a fence.
Say, well, the greenhouse is the fence.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah.
The fence goes to the left of the greenhouse, correct?
Right, but, I mean, if you drove past and saw it, the greenhouse is eighteen feet tall.
I don't think you need a fence.
If he puts it behind the greenhouse, then I'm
If you put it behind the green, I think the greenhouse
Is the fence.
The greenhouse will be the fence.
How high is the greenhouse?
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet?
And the greenhouse?
And, and your showroom will be totally
It has to be taller than the greenhouse in order to water tidy.
Okay, so, again, eighteen feet, so, okay.
Is this the green, this is the greenhouse, you guys?
Yes.
And that's going to be staying, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I will call for a vote
I'll be all right with that.
On E, it's been a while since I actually read it, so, yes, on E, all in favor of E being met? With the stipulations that we've placed upon this, that we're gonna require.
Would you wanna ask the applicant if he would be willing to do that before we voted, so you know whether he would agree to it or not?
I think you said you'd be flexible, are you willing to put those up behind the greenhouse?
Am I willing to put the twelve-by-fourteen display behind the greenhouse, so it's hidden from the view from the street? Yes.
Okay, and you had another one too, so they'd both be up there, right?
Well, I'd like to leave that one where it is.
Right now, it looks like that's partially hidden by the showroom, based on its current position.
Okay, so you wanna leave one there, but put one up behind?
Yeah, do you have a picture of the other one?
Uh
Is that where the blue tarp is located in
No.
C three?
No, no.
Can you bring up that picture?
I probably do on my phone, but that's
Can you pull up C three, please?
Yeah, so it's just to the left of that utility pole there, is where he's proposing to have
Right, the, the, what you, okay, what you see right there now is, is a smaller greenhouse that will be moved up to my house.
Oh, that's the one, okay.
Okay, okay.
And then you're wanting to put the other display down there, which is the first thing you see from the road before you get to your bigger greenhouse?
And, and would you say that approximately where the blue tarp is on the right-hand side, that's where that d- second display would be?
Uh, no.
Eight-by-fourteen?
Is it more to the right, or more to the left of that?
You, you see the telephone pole, that, that blue tarp is an RV.
Okay.
Um, see the, the telephone pole?
Yeah.
It would be right behind the telephone pole.
Okay, so it's a little more to the right than that?
Correct.
Okay. And the building will come out to before the telephone pole, the showroom?
Uh, no, that'd probably be the, the five, if you look at the building, that'd be the far right of the pole, the pole's like five feet off the edge of the driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you might partially block the second display
Yes.
by the showroom, but not fully block it?
Correct.
I'd be fine with that. I, I'm, I'm trying to follow you here, the, the other display is going to be out?
You won't be able to see the other display from the street, or until you get up past the greenhouse in my driveway.
And the other one will be up behind the greenhouse?
The big one will be behind the greenhouse, which will be totally blocked from the street.
Okay.
And the small one, with the eight-by-fourteen, would be kinda kitty-corner from that telephone pole back towards the greenhouse, but half of that will probably be blocked by the s- the new showroom after it's built.
So, if we look at the photo right here, right behind Brian and the Roy, um, the smaller greenhouse, the eight-by-fourteen greenhouse, it'll be located right here?
Correct.
Okay, and then in front of this greenhouse here that's existing, there's a slab on the ground that would have the showroom, and the showroom coming roughly about here would, uh, break up the image of that second smaller portable display.
Correct.
Is that clear to everyone on the board?
Yes.
Okay. So you're fine with putting the other display up behind greenhouse?
Don't have a choice.
If it's a compromise.
You're probably right, you probably don't have a choice. Um, all in favor of E being met with the stipulation that we placed, that the one greenhouse be put up, I mean, the ones
Both greenhouses behind the
Both greenhouses being blocked by the new facility and the greenhouse. Okay, it's five, nothing, unanimous.
Would everyone please turn off their cell phones?
Thank you. All right. F, if located in a shoreland zone as depicted on the Town and Scottville Official Shorezone Mapping, the proposed use will comply with all the requirements of the Town and Scottville Shoreland zoning, you're not in a shoreland zone, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Don't know if we need to really go down through, I think all in favor of this being met? It's fine, all in favor? Five, nothing. G, the applicant has sufficient right title or interest to the site's proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed usages, you said you have. Any questions on this from, or comments, please findings of fact on this?
No, I, he's presented that he has right and title, so we agree with that, as we have in the past.
And we do have the tax bill in there as well, so that shows that, all in favor of this being met? It's five to nothing. On G, H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. I think we've put one in there, so Mr. Loizao, you can expand upon that, or?
No, I agree. He, uh, he discussed what he has for income, as well as his wife or occupation, so I think that makes them, uh, gives them the ability to fi- meet any financial, uh, needs that they would arise if we put financial stipulations on this particular appeal.
I agree with Mr. Loizao.
I agree, they've clearly stated they have the financial means.
Yeah, you have the financial means, and you know what we're, what we're requiring, so I think it's been pretty straightforward.
I agree.
Agreed.
All in favor of H being met? It's unanimous, five-zero. I, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operations. Again, I think this is pretty straightforward, but
Yes, we stated on record, eight AM to five PM is typical hours, and, uh, low noise because of the low density.
I agree.
I have nothing to add.
I don't have anything to add to that, you already expanded upon that, you said you're not gonna relieve a lot of traffic, you're gonna have standout.
If it gets more, I'm gonna move.
Because
I'm gonna agree.
Agreed.
All in favor of the last section being met? It's five, something. Onto performance standards for home-based occupation. Uh, do we need to, I think we need to have a final vote on the special exception to make sure, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the appeal number, sorry?
Twenty-six, twenty, twenty-six, thirty-four.
As stated with the stipulations by the board.
Anybody second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh?
Um, we wanna reiterate the stipulation first, so we're
The conditions ought to be clearly stated, so that those
Okay. You wanna amend your, with the specific
Sure.
conditions?
Uh, vote to approve based on putting the, based on the sketch hit that has been shown, the front display will go behind the new position of the greenhouse, and the second display can stay in its current location, partially hidden by the, uh
Showroom, excuse me.
Anything more you want to that? We good? Okay. There was a second?
I seconded.
Seconded? All in favor of the appeal being met? Passes five, nothing?
You don't really have to go back through the performance standards, I don't think, Eva, uh, LeRue, because you, you discussed those as part of all of this.
Okay.
And he already answered them, and those are performance standards for the, they're, the performance standards aren't the board's responsibility, that's more my responsibility when we issue the permit.
Okay.
Um, if you, if the board, I think what I would put out to the board members is, are you comfortable with the responses that you got to these? And have you addressed all of the issues that arose out of the, mainly the displays? And what was the other one, the displays and the retail sales, I think?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad you pointed that out, Brian, because I mean, I, I voted yes, because I thought we were going to then vote on the fact that you can't have displays.
Yeah.
And that I don't think that this should pass, so
Okay, then maybe you need, need, then maybe you need to go back to
I do, I do think we need to go back through them and have a separate vote.
I mean, that's great, but I mean, we just sat here and used the word displays for the last ten minutes, and it specifically says, displays are not allowed. Um, so, yeah.
So, so let's go back through the performance standards, the home occupation?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just made clarification, what, is that vote no longer valid? I don't know.
That's kinda where I was
I guess I didn't, I thought we were voting on the special exception, and then we'd go through the home occupation.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I thought as well. Ms. Loizao, do you have any other thoughts on that?
No, I thought that we're gonna do as well.
Okay.
So, it's a, um, will this just be a, a point of order, we would correct ourselves, and?
So the appeal has not been approved for the special exception until we go through and
Home occupation is approved.
Get the home occupation approved.
Again, just, just for clarity, the the board's purview, i- it's important to, to review the home occupation standards in, in section nine. But what you're truly approving with the application, the application doesn't have those standards on it, the application has the special exception standards, you're approving the special exception.
So we can't vote on that till we go through?
The, the same way that you would review a special exception adjunct use to a place of worship.
Okay, so then we need to resend our vote and go through
No, I'm not, well, I'm not sure that you do, what, let me explain, I, 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 I thought in going through those performance standards, you raised the questions that you then discussed as part of your findings of fact on the special exception. You, you, you dealt, I thought you were dealing with the display issue, and I thought you were dealing with the retail sales issue.
Mm-hmm.
There really is no, in my mind, there's no formal, um, finding of fact or conclusion of law associated with the performance standards, other than you reviewed the questions with the applicant, you got his responses to that, so that you could then take that knowledge and review the special exception questions. See what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but I think the vote needs to come after this
I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying that, um, I, I think it's a good idea to go back through it, it's just not a formal process like you, like you just went through with the special exception thing. There's no harm in discussing them, and, and maybe out of that, you come up with additional conditions that you wanna put into the special exception, um, findings.
Okay. But it is
I just wanna be
When we're reviewing this as a home occupation and a special exception, we need to review all the criteria, and we need to be clear that we're all okay with that criteria for both.
Yep, I agree.
And there have been questions raised that we may not be okay with all the criteria of this. So with that being said, I think we need to go back and
Could, one, one thought?
Yes.
Could we do, um, since, with the motion, can we discuss the performance standards and then, uh, make a motion to add an amendment or an additional restriction onto the motion that was passed? Can we do that? Like, if we, if we go through and discuss the home occupation performance standards right now, um, and we say that, for instance, um, you know, the displays issue, displays are not allowed, they need to be removed or something like that, can we make an amendment to our motion stating that those can't be there?
I think we need to take the motion off the table and go through the performance for home occupation.
Okay. And make it part of that. Ms. Loizao, do you have any other?
No, I think, I think the point about special exceptions that, uh, that was made is, that's really what we're voting on, I agree. But I thought we were gonna go through home occupation as well, just to make sure everybody was on the same page, because I think there was a question around five, which Ms. Shoup is probably gonna be discussing in depth. So that could throw out the use of E in special exceptions for her. And I, I think if we had done it the other way around, talked about occupation first, and then voted into special exception, then that would have come up and surfaced, but since we did it kind of backwards, I think it was, i- i- it appears like you're being not let in.
No, you did it based upon the guidelines, but it kind of comes out backwards, yes.
And that's okay. But, but I think we can, I, again, I think we could review home occupation, and then re-review what we did on special exceptions after and do a final vote, I think that's fair.
I'm fine with that, just trying to work through procedurally how to, how to address this, so.
Let's just go down through to see where we're at on these.
Okay.
Um, the occupation professionals shall be carried on wholly within the principal building or within a building accessory there too. Ms. Loizao, I'll start with you.
Uh, again, I think we're okay, the applicant has proven that it, it fits in this RF zone, in my opinion.
Uh, I struggle with the building accessory, um, I, um, is it a display, or is it an accessory? So, no.
Uh, could you come back to me, please?
Okay. Um, based upon what we've been told upon this for the building within the accessory there for, I, I think I would side with you that
Cause I'm looking at the accessory as if that's the showroom and the greenhouse storage, not the two displays that he's talking about, I think that comes up in five.
Yeah.
But I think he's planning on using that showroom as the dwelling, or the spec- whatever I wanna call it, a special exception here for this particular dwelling.
I would concur with you on this, you still need more time?
Well, if it's wholly within the principal building, then you wouldn't need the displays, just to clarify for the board.
Well, the principal building would be the home.
Right. That's definitely back off the
Cause it's home occupation, so in this case it's
Or within a building accessory, so sorry, or, or within a building accessory.
And that's what this is.
That's what this is, yes, just to clarify.
Right, so the business will take place wholly within the greenhouse storage and showroom, yeah, no, no physical business transactions or, um, signing contractual documents would take place anywhere but the showroom. Okay, I'm fine with that.
I thought a home occupation had to be in your house.
It, it, it You lobster out of your home, right?
It clearly
There's tanks in your garage.
That's a warehouse there.
Yeah, but if you look at Down by Black Point Road, you've got lobster shacks that are off
We're not talking about that, we're talking about this.
I'm saying that's just another example of it's not in the home structure, it's in this, either accessory building or another quote-unquote "structure" on the property. If you do, if you repair cars, if you repair cars as a home occupation, you're not doing it in your dwelling, you might have a quote-unquote "second" building on the property that you do that in.
Okay, but isn't there someplace in the home occupation that says you could only use twenty or twenty-five percent of the square footage of your house?
And it says in the dwelling.
Yeah, it's in the dwelling.
That's, that percentage is in the dwelling.
So what's the dwelling, is his house the dwelling?
His house is the dwelling, this is not the dwelling.
This is the accessory building.
Okay, so, but isn't the home occupation a cer- certain percentage of the dwelling?
If it's in the home itself, outside of the home, I think it's that thousand square
It can be any size, outside of the home?
Outside of that, it's that thousand square feet.
Okay.
Cause it says right here on C, space within the accessory building totaling not more than one thousand feet.
So that's why the twenty percent came up and doesn't really count.
Have we addressed your concerns on that?
Not really.
Okay, well, you certainly can vote whichever way you want. Um, all, all in favor of one? Two, all opposed? Two? So, you voted yes. So, three yes, two no's.
Who was the two no's? Karen?
Me.
Okay.
Home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes, I think this is pretty clear, the house is...
For residential?
Yeah.
This dwelling is for... I agree.
Yes, I agree.
Agreed.
Yeah. All in favor of two? Genanamous five. No more than one person who is not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation.
Yeah, he's proven that he's not gonna have additional people working for him, it's himself, so. Meets?
Yes, he's answered our questions.
Agreed.
Yeah, there will be no employees, so we've already addressed that.
You don't have any employees when you install these?
But that doesn't happen on the property.
That happens, I'm sorry.
That happens on the trust as well.
It can be a separate contract.
Do those people come to your house?
No.
Okay. I'm all right with it.
All in favor of three? Genanamous five. Exterior signage shall be permitted in accordance with the home occupation sign provisions under section 12, sign regulation subsections.
Were you planning on adding a sign at the front of the property?
That would be Mr. Longstaff, I believe. That would be Mr. Longstaff.
So, as long as you follow the guidelines that are stated, you're okay? And you get your per, and you get your permit? And, and you get a permit, excuse me.
Yes, you do have to have a permit, you do need to see Mr. Longstaff for it.
Yeah, I'm confident the town will take care of that.
Good. I'm good, I trust Mr. Longstaff will get everything done. All in favor of four? Genanamous. Five, there shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal building, except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of this ordinance. This prohibition shall not apply to the storage of lobster traps.
Yes. Again, the way I'm looking at this is, home occupations are meant to be in the home, this is in a secondary structure. The displays that he's gonna use are, in my opinion, within reason. No difference than having some type of a farm stand where you're gonna show your vegetables at the road. He's trying to do that, but with these structures, they're larger than a couple of vegetables in a small stand. He's doing what we are asking, or has agreed to do what we were asking, which is to hide those structures to minimize the visual disturbance that's gonna happen out at the road. He's gonna do what he has to do to clean up the front of his yard, because he knows it affects his sales. He's putting a fence of some type to protect those things that he wants to have out of view from this display and, and showroom area, so I think he's doing what he has to, to clean up the front of his yard. So, I know it says no displays, but in this type of a home occupation, you have to have something. And I think he's trying to be reasonable with this, so, again, as a proponent of trying to have people do home occupations in businesses, as much as I don't want him to have displays, I don't think what he's asking is unreasonable. So, in that case, I think he meets.
How do you get around the no exterior displays with that reasoning? Just because you don't consider them to be...
From now on, we're shutting every farm stand down, we're shutting every small business down that puts anything out on the road.
That's totally different, you're talking inventory.
It's not a display.
Okay.
This is an inventory.
Let's go one by one. Go ahead.
No, I mean, I'm kind of a stickler for definitions and rules, and I mean, no exterior display means no exterior display. I think it's a slippery slope when we try to let appeals come through, when we start saying, oh, well, let's spend an hour and a half with an appeal and say you can put a fence here and do this and do that, it's a residential neighborhood.
No, it's not, it's a rural RF.
Okay.
That's not the same rule.
Rule.
Yes, it's different rules, it's not a residential property, it's an RF zone.
I mean, no exterior display for me means no exterior display, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of a home occupation. You're specifically wanting to put stuff outside to show your home occupation, I think this is an exact contradiction to what number five is, so, no.
I'm struggling with this one as well, there shall be no exterior display, but both, they're on the plan, it says portable display and portable display. And I understand trying to accommodate, but the issue I questioned, which was answered, no exterior storage of materials. Materials will be dropped off, but then they will be taken to a job site. My concern with this one is making sure that as materials are dropped off, they're immediately brought, and they're not left for days or a week or so, or something like that. I'm still pretty nebulous on my decision on this one.
And this is why, Mr. Longstaff, I thought we should go over this as a addendum to the special exceptions, because I think this is a sticking point for a lot of people, even though we've got concessions on the displays, part of it does say here, "There shall be no exterior display." I mean, I'm not having a problem with the existing storage, you showed us there shouldn't be, there won't be any existing storage, you've talked to us about that, you said you're not gonna be getting it there, it'll just go to the customer's location. And there's no other exterior indication of a home occupation. I mean, that one you could look at, too, because I mean, if you've got a sign on your property, it's an indication of a home occupation.
That's permitted by those standards.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Don't confuse those issues.
No, I'm not confusing them. And, I mean, I, the biggest thing for me is, as it's been said, is no exterior displays. And I don't consider, like, your argument was that a farm stand is an exterior display, I think it's... I don't think it's a display, because it's got product, it's, it's more of a shack, I guess, so I'm looking at it that way. This is an actual display of something that's going to be sold, a tomato is not gonna be a display of something.
Look down Gorm Road, going towards the university, you'll look on your right, you're gonna see a guy that displays the, I don't know what you call them, the brass things you put up on the roof. Is that a display? He's got five or six out at the edge of the road.
Which one are you talking about?
I don't, I don't even, I don't know what you call this.
But is that a home-based occupation?
Oh, cupola?
Cupola.
Yeah, thank you. Go down the road, you see him right there, is that a display? I don't see much of, I, this is a bigger display, I get you, but if you're gonna start pointing fingers, be careful, because they're all over the place, people display at the end of their road, and I know people don't like it.
People do a lot of stuff that they're not permitted to do, I mean, he's coming here and saying, I've been running a business out of my house since 1999, which was not permitted, and now he's, and so, you know, people do stuff every day, he's actually asking for permission, so we're gonna follow the rules.
But, oh. Did you just say he ran a business out of his property that wasn't permitted?
I thought you said when you moved there in 1999, that you ran your construction business out of your house, and you still do.
Right, I mean, when you're running, I mean, when you're running a quality contractor, you don't see people coming to your house.
Have to take the mic, just...
No, it's fine, he acted, he said yes.
Yeah, but just because he parks his construction equipment on his property, doesn't mean that he doesn't have right to do that. You're, you're saying that he was breaking the rules, and I want to, I want you to correct that on record.
Right.
Is that him breaking the law or breaking the rules?
What I want, I think what's hard is, when your yard is littered like this, it's hard to know what is from your home occupation that you've been operating there from now, what's your hobby in that? So, we want to say, oh, let's let you build a new, start a new business there, but you've already been running a business there, make, a different business, but it's already been operating there.
Can you please clarify your statement?
Yes, I have...
No, not you, please, I'm not, I want you to clarify your statement.
How so? What would you like me to say specifically?
You just said he ran a business illegally out of his home or breaking the rules.
Sorry, I don't know if it's illegal, but I, my understanding under ordinance is if you have a home business, you need permission.
You tell me.
Yes, sir.
So, so I think part of the misunderstanding is, a home-based business takes place at the home. And, and as a remodeling contractor, or as a plumber, or as an electrician, or as a pipe fitter, or as a welder, you're occupa, you're, you go to a job site and you perform your occupation. You, you're not, you're not doing it at the home. You may have equipment that you take with you to go do your job at the home. And in the RF district, you're allowed two commercial vehicles to be parked in here, which could be loaders, could be dump trucks, could be whatever. So, I think the confusion is that he's, yes, he's been a contractor, living at this residence and going to work from this residence. He's had some, some sunroom displays parked there, but he hasn't advertised them, there's no signage. And, and that part is a little iffy and in the gray area, but I wouldn't go so far as to say it was illegal to do so. It's just that he hasn't operated a home-based business. I, I had already asked him to move those structures back away from the road for that, for that purpose, so. There's a little bit of a gray area, if you're a plumber and you have a van with Joe's Plumbing Service on it, and you park it every night in your driveway, are you running a home-based business?
I guess if the plumber's, you know, doing his books and bringing the trash back and things like that, and then you just, it's a slippery slope.
Well, it is, but we're not prohibiting Joe Plumber from parking his van, van at his house at night when he comes home from the job. That, we're not going there, and, and I think that's, I think that's what Mr. Loizel is saying. We're just not, we're not going there. Is there a lot of activity on the site? We all agree, yes, there's a lot of activity on this site. I can have many, as, as many hobbies as I want to have, and if my hobby happens to be as wacky as a sawmill, I guess I can do that. If I want to fly large-scale model airplanes around my yard, I guess I can do that. Nobody's prohibiting me from do, so, I, I think we have to, we have to go back and get away from all of that stuff and concentrate on the application that's in front of us. And keep our comments focused on the application that's in front of us, and keep in mind, conditions that we want to state as part of that application, I think are, are fair game, I think it's completely fair to make it a condition that the yard get cleaned up. I think that's completely fair, but I don't think that we can start to go into other things that are not in front of us tonight just because we have Google Earth up on the sky, on the screen, and we see a bunch of stuff on there. So, let's, let's keep to our knitting and focus on the application, and, and start to ask some real questions, like, why couldn't those display, you've got a big building out back of the greenhouse, can't you pull those trailers in that building so they're no longer displayed outside and walk people right over there and show them those displays? You can't do it? What's in the building that you gotta get rid of?
Or what's going in the building?
There's nothing you're talking about.
I'm talking about this big structure right here. Did everybody miss that? Am I the only one that sees that?
No, we just don't have pictures of it from what's been presented, I mean, had we not?
So, I was just wondering why you couldn't create internal space to slide those trailers, those display units inside somewhere? They're no longer displayed, that's my playpen, that's my man cave.
Well, maybe the man cave needs to move to the house.
Put that in the small greenhouse, it won't go in the house.
I, I think you had addressed that before and said that you were, that was where your wood shop was.
I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to find solutions to the display problem.
I guess Mr. Longstaff's comment is basically, you'd said that it was, I, I believe you had said that that was your wood hobby that you did out of there. And I think Mr. Longstaff's looking at it like, well, maybe you don't do your hobby and you just slide those in the building, and then we don't have to deal with any of this, because there's no displays. So, I mean, we're gonna vote, we're done with the questions and everything, but we'll go over them and just vote according to that. But do you want, the applicant answered that question, is that what you're asking for?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to guide the board back to the, the standards and...
Yes, we're still on the density, display, storage.
Yes, we still our own that, and, I mean, my comments are basically that I, I, it's a display. I mean, I see it as a, as a display, and I, I think there could be other ways to do this, so, that's just my own.
They're displays. I mean, let me ask you another question. There's certainly enough room to put both those displays in a greenhouse.
No. Greenhouse is 16 by 24.
Yeah?
And this, one display is eight by 14.
The two displays are 20 by 14, they'd fit in there.
You couldn't walk around them, I mean, the greenhouse is not, it, it's a sloped ceiling, I mean, you've been in a greenhouse, you know it's a sloped ceiling, so, they, I couldn't get them in the building. If I could get one in there, that's all I could get in there.
I can believe that.
I guess I would just ask for a yes or no on this.
Guess the answer's no. I gotta, I gotta hang up with the displays, I really do.
All in favor of five being met? One? All opposed?
Upstake?
No.
Upstake, that's not, I'm sorry.
You opposed?
Four opposed.
I think I can scowl at you, but I really did.
I was, too.
I really did.
No nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare. I'll get out here and then I'll...
Again, I, I think this type of a business doesn't create an odor or an issue that's gonna be a nuisance.
No, I don't think any nuisance would be created by this.
Nothing bad.
I don't think any nuisance would be created either, that's why I'd asked about the sawmill, and I mean, if that's gonna be done inside and it's gonna be out of the way, you're not putting any more dust or odors or anything like that, so I think this is pretty straightforward on this one.
Yeah, I agree.
All in favor of six being met? Genanamous. Traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood.
Yeah, we discussed this earlier, low density.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the, I think you had mentioned the parking spaces, what did you say, it was like 44 feet or something like that?
Yeah, that's the next one.
Enough for eight cars?
Yeah.
Any comments down at the other end of the table? All in favor of seven being met? Genanamous. Eight, in addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of the dwelling adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and their vehicles for the maximum number of users or customers the home occupation may attract during peak operating hours.
Yeah, there's more than enough parking.
Yes.
It won't contribute to, yes, I agree.
No, that road you can't really contribute much to, about five o'clock, can't get anywhere in that road.
There's plenty of room for parking.
All in favor of being met for eight? Genanamous. Nine, the home occupation utilized not more than 20 percent of the dwelling unit floor, provided that the purposes of the calculation, unfinished basement and attic spaces are not included, unfinished attic and basement spaces, and spaces within an accessory building totaling not more than 1,000 square feet of floor area.
Yeah, I used the 1,000 square feet, because it's not in the dwelling, and I showed him at 1036 with the quote-unquote "displays." So, if those count as that square footage, it brings it over, if they were displays at 280, it brings the, the accessory unit to 756, for those that voted differently in that last one. So, under my position, it met it, because I didn't look at the, the displays as part of the structure.
It's a lot of math, I'm not gonna lie. I mean, I gotta say, Mr. Loizel, he's got the numbers sitting right out here, and when you put in the displays, it's over 1,000, so I'm gonna have to go, no.
I, I struggle with this one, even though it says portable display, the display is still going to be there for long periods of time. It's, so it is, in my mind, semi-permanent, even though it may be moved or transported elsewhere. And it being a, from that perspective, looking at 1,038, 36 square feet, which exceeds 1,000 square feet of floor area, so, I don't agree.
I would agree that this is met, based on the fact that the displays are on wheels, they can be taken to fairs, they can be taken anywhere, so they're not part of the structure. It's 756 square feet, that's what we're looking at, we're not looking at the additional for the displays, because they're not permanent, they're not on a slab, they're not attached. So, it's, it's under the 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, if you don't count the displays, he's all right.
All in...
Can you live without the displays?
So, I had a few comments that I missed the round last time going around, too, but, you know, what's, are two displays really necessary for your business? Could you possibly have turned that, the, the showroom into, used one of those displays as the showroom?
We're not asking questions any further here, we're just doing a yes or no at this point.
Okay. I mean, that's, that was just one of my questions, my concerns, was if there was, any, any other way to try to make that all work.
Yeah, we've asked all the questions of the applicants, we just need to be yes or no. All in favor of nine being met? Three opposed? Two? Ten, home occupations may include retail sales, subject to the following limitations. The total area devoted to retail sales is limited to 400 square feet and must be fully enclosed within a building. The sale of products is limited to products or articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises, and seafood caught are harvested off the premises by persons who reside in the dwelling unit or by one employee... in the dwelling unit or by one employee permitted under paragraph three. Mr. Loizell?
Yeah, it's under four hundred feet because the showroom is, I think, two hundred and fifty-two square feet.
Um, no, 'cause there's, I mean, the products and articles produced are not gonna be assembled or processed on the premises.
Uh, can you come back to me, please?
You gotta learn to make decisions here.
I know, I know.
Um, on this...
Do we have, I thought we had two separate numbers for the, um, actual office and the showroom. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, no. Uh, the, the building, if it's an accessory building, can be a thousand square feet, no more.
Right.
Four hundred square feet of that can be retail sales space. So, imagine somebody who's creating furniture, uh, buying furniture. Got their wood shop and they've got their sales area, but it's all under the same...
Okay, and we were under that when we did our calculations.
Oh, yeah, you're under that. I think, I think my shoe's question is a valid one, and I wrestle with that myself. Like, we, we had one similar applicant in the past year that was going to do knock-down cabinetry, assemble cabinetry. It could be assembled at the site, at the home occupation, or it could be assembled at the job site. And I think, I think the board kinda gave enough latitude to that one because it could be done either there or somewhere else. We've had people who assembled, um, uh, floral arrangements and then delivered them somewhere else. This is one that, you know, the sale is actually just an agreement. There's, there's no product changing hands at the site. So, it's a little trickier. The product is actually, it's definitely not assembled at the site. It's definitely assembled off-site. This, I, I, I struggle with how you can do, you know, how you can do that. It seems like it should be a fit, but if you read that definition, it's tough to, to square it out.
I would agree with you on this. I mean, we've, we've looked at the square footage, which it's under. But it does say, and I know we've, we've had a little latitude in the past on things for processed on, I mean, assembled or processed on the premises. And maybe we shouldn't have, but this is pretty clear that it's processed on the premises, and it's not. So, I would probably be a no on this one.
I mean, he meets the four hundred square foot limit on the showroom. I don't know. I'm hung up on this one. I really am.
No comment.
So, for my answer, um, yes, I agree that the total area devoted to retail sales is under four hundred square feet because all the deals, contractual signings, and agreements take place inside the smaller area, which, showroom, which is under four hundred feet. It's two hundred and fifty-two square feet. Um, the sale of products limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises. Now, one way that I can, that you can, um, interpret this is that material is being brought to this location. He's processing it by putting it onto his, uh, his trucks, his trailers, whatever he has, and then transports that to the job site to then assemble it there. But the receiving of raw material, I would, I would argue as being processed on the premises. The only concern I have with that, as I mentioned earlier, is that I, I, the exterior storage of material, that, you know, as material comes in, it should be...
He was gonna put that in the greenhouse.
Gotcha, sorry, thank you. Um, so, yes, receiving of the materials, the raw materials, I would consider and interpret as being processed on premises.
And to add to your description, if the sale occurs at that building and it's direct shipped to an owner, I consider that being processed in that building. So, that's why I'm saying the showroom is where it got processed. It got direct shipped to the owner and he assembled it on their site. It got processed in the showroom, not anyplace else. That's why it's two fifty-two. So, if you have an internet sales business, you never receive the product in your hand and it goes directly to a home, but you sold it in that property, that is processed. So, even though it's not assembled, it's not fabricated, it's not touched on-site, doesn't mean it wasn't processed. So, I agree with you.
It's good argument. All in favor of ten being met? Four opposed. One. Uh, you're not a fisherman or lobsterman or shellfish tuberister, so I don't think we really need to go into that too much. Um, all in favor of eleven being met?
Not applicable.
Five-oh. Motor vehicle repairs or motor vehicle towing businesses, again, we're not doing repairs and things that...
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed in that sense. All in favor of twelve? It's five. Now, I'd like a final vote for appeal number twenty-three sixty-four, or actually a motion based upon the special exception criteria that we went over and the performance standards for home-based occupation. If anybody has any further questions, we can certainly go over questions. But if there's a motion to approve or deny?
I will restate the motion that I gave before with the stipulation that the board has asked the applicant to take the front portable display and put it behind the greenhouse storage area and leave the rear portable display in the location that was shown on the drawing.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion. Board members' questions, comments?
Have we in the past been very, very strict on displays?
I don't think it's come up like this before.
Well, I think it's also important to look at the future as well. Because, I mean, they make these decisions, and yes, he lives way out on this road and in the rural district, but, um, you know, this decision can become applicable to everyone who comes before the board.
And I think most other displays in the past, if they've been called displays, I don't really think they've been called displays. Have either one, not been in a home-based occupation, or two, been something that's not an actual product like this. This is, this is a pretty substantial-sized product as a display. Probably the biggest, I think, I've seen since I've been on the board, which is called a display. And it's, it's everywhere. I mean, we can't get around the display question. It's on the documents we were presented. It's in the, it's, it's everywhere. I mean, it all revolves around the display.
Yeah, I think, uh, the whole thing around home occupation is whether it fits in the, the zone that you're putting it in, right? If he wanted to put this in a residential zone in the center of Scarborough, would it fit? Not even close. This is an RF zone. The lots are much bigger than a residential zone. So, I think that's part of our opinion to just say, well, home-based occupation, not have a display, right? Is, if I wanted to have hot air balloons at my house in Scarborough on my one-third acre, clearly it doesn't fit if I wanna blow up a hot air balloon on my property. But if I lived on a ten-acre lot and I wanna sell a hot air balloon and I wanna blow one up on my property, it kinda fits. 'Cause it's wide open, I'm on a big lot. So, I think it's whether it fits or not. So, I understand what everybody's saying. My opinion, again, it's gotta fit in the right area. And if this were a different RF, which had different density, maybe that would be a different decision as well. But in this particular application, we know what the property looked like ten years ago. We know what it looks like today. Does it fit? And I'm just one vote. So, that's what you have to decide.
And I mean, back to Mr...
Does it fit in this particular zone, in this particular application?
Back to Mr. Loizell's comments. If you look at the RF farming district and you look under special exceptions, which we're considering as this home occupation, I think this is what he's exploring. One of the items that is actually available to be put there is a home-based occupation. So, it technically does fit. That's why we have to go back to the special criteria, special exceptions criteria. That's why we went over the home-based occupation site criteria. And we're kind of circling it all around at this point by going back to what does fit in the RF zone. And it does state right there, special exceptions under C, is a home-based occupation. So, that's how this kind of all comes back around on itself. When we're looking at the special exception and then going to the home-based occupation and then going to the RF zone, it's listed. So, it does fit, whether or not we like it or...
Whether you think the displays count or not? Those are legitimate arguments.
We're looking at this as a display and we're stuck on the display thing. You can circle it all around. It does fit, like Mr. Loizell's saying, but...
Mr. Chair, if I, I wonder if the trailers are, they, they're obviously registered, correct?
Yes.
And they're registered at HOW as a trailer, probably. Not a, would it be considered a commercial vehicle?
Do you want me to open this up for public, for his comments, so he can take the volume?
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there because two commercial vehicles are allowed on a residential...
I was picking up on that earlier too, on that. That was one of the things I caught.
I've just...
I, I think, and again, it's kinda getting back to semantics. Everything we have says display. I mean, it's, where's the document? If it was a, if it was a commercial vehicle, as you're saying, maybe it's not con- considered a display. But... I mean, isn't it written right? Portable display.
No, that's clearly, clearly labeled display.
I mean, if it was, if you had listed those as mobile cars, I don't know. Maybe it's not a display, like Mr. Longstaff is saying. But it's pretty clear. I mean, we're looking right at it. There's two that say portable display on them. That's, that's the tough part for the board. We gotta look at it and we have to do the straight face test and say, we've done all these things. We've looked at special exceptions. We've looked at the home-based occupation. We've gone back to the RF zone. Yeah, it fits in there and everything's there, but we're also looking at something that clearly states that it's not allowed. So, I guess, do we have a second on that motion? We're still in discussion?
I second it, yeah, we're still...
James, second.
So, I, from my, from my standpoint, I see it, uh, looking at the writing inside the ordinance, unless the portable display is moved permanently inside of the greenhouse storage or a portion of it is chopped and put inside the showroom, it can't be outside. And it doesn't meet, doesn't meet criteria. It says display. You can't get around that. It's in ink on paper. And that's where I stand on it.
And it's in the presentation as well, so...
Yes, so that's where I stand on it.
Any comments of this under the table?
Um, I'm still kicking around what Rick was saying about, um, home occupations and, you know, larger area. I think what we're doing is we're asking him, we're asking him in the special exception to move the displays. And what we're doing is we're, we're not trying to hide them. We're trying to put them out of harm's way, shall we say? He could still use them. Is it against the ordinance? Yeah, it's against the ordinance. But the ordinance is, I mean, we're here to temper the ordinance if we have to.
Yeah, and I also think it's important, though, to think of, you know, the future neighbors. I mean, yes, his neighbor is his friend and he's okay with it, but, you know, that might not be his neighbor in five years. And the new neighbor might not be okay with the fact that the board said, oh, put your big displays there. And now, that's another issue.
We can't, we can't handle the future.
No, it's just something that you keep in mind if that was actually you.
But the question, the question from the shoe, would, would it, would it uphold to a legal challenge in the future if another neighbor came in? Did our decision hold water? And was it well thought out, right? And, and well explained? So, if it got fought in court by another neighbor in the future, is it legally binding? So, I think that's a legitimate question. Is the wording that says no displays, and as soon as a document has display on it, is it now gonna be legally binding in the future?
I would make one additional comment as well, just in regard to the overall application. Um, and Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong on this. Uh, if this application were denied, you would not be allowed to come back for one year with this exact same planned layout. If the site were to change, uh, if the displays were to be removed from this application, would that, would that, um, be interpreted as a new application?
That would be a decision to be made by the board. That's under the board's purview to decide if that's a significant enough change to re-hear the application. I would rather see, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I'm looking at everything that you've done tonight, the one hang-up that got a negative vote was the displays. So, if the displays can get resolved as a condition of your, uh, motion, then you could actually deal with this tonight, you know, coming back when it would be an issue.
No, but I, I mean, we, we spoke to the applicant. He said this is what he wants to do. This is how he's presented his application. We've done this, I think we need to go.
And I'm not saying that you don't, I'm just saying...
Right, I think, he, he said he's not gonna change his mind.
He could give it consideration and come back at a later time for you to consider. And you can say, no, it's not different, we're not gonna hear it. Or yes, it seems like it's different enough, we will hear it.
But I think it is the obligation of the board. If we see a way around it so that we can come to a compromise with an applicant, it's our obligation from the city to do our best to point that out to them. And if, for example, we wanted to see if the applicant would remove the displays altogether from the property, whether it would kill the project or not, and he agreed to not put the displays, and that would make it pass, that would be his choice, knowing that he could move forward.
Right, we would give him a path forward.
To be honest with you, I think there are other options that can be done, but I don't wanna resolve this applicant's issues for him. I think, from a display, display standpoint, the display is, look, I'll help you out. The display is there to show your, your potential clients, how they're constructed, and give them a feel for what it's gonna be like. Do you need a full-scale display to be able to do that? I think it's debatable. You could split one in half and have you walk in a half of a piece of two different sizes, or there are other options that, it's not, there are things that can be done and you could put them in the greenhouse, and then it's not a quote-unquote "display." But, again, that, that's your choice. And I think you might have some decisions, 'cause it looks like the board is leaning towards, displays are an issue. And the way it's been presented, it doesn't look like it's gonna pass. So, the question for me, for the board before the vote is taken, is there anything that can be decided between the board and the applicant that would allow it to move forward, that the board would still be pleased to have the application approved?
And, and normally, this would be the point where we would table something. We've already tabled this once. We generally never try to table something twice. So, we wanna try to get it resolved. We've given you a lot of extra leeway that we don't normally give, going back and forth with questions for you to try and find a way to resolve this. And we've really done some thorough thought process in this, and I think everybody's contributed a lot to it. Um, I can certainly open it up to you for more comments. You can speak to board's questions. And I, I do believe that the display issue is going to be an issue. I, I, I'm thinking that it may be an issue of passage for you. And Mr. Loizell had some great ideas. I don't know if that looks like something you would wanna do. If you want, I mean, you go into Walmart, you go into Sam's or whatever, they're selling tents, but they have a four-foot tent up on the shelf. They don't have the full tent displayed out front. So, I mean, you can certainly address his comments and address ours and see what you think. I think with the displays, it's gonna be hard for this to pass. But go ahead and give us your ideas or comments.
When you go out to buy a car, you don't sit in the showroom looking like, oh, here's a door, here's a...
It's not a home occupation, sir. That's what we're getting at.
What, what I'm trying to say is, the product that I sell, the average product price, it's all in your house, is thirty thousand dollars. It's been proven by the company, SunSpace, that markups don't work. People need to sit in it, to feel it, to actually see what it's gonna look like in real life. They, they can't look at a piece of it and envision it. Ninety percent, I'll give it credit, seventy-five percent of the people out there that are my customers cannot visualize. They have to see it, they have to feel it. So, displays go, the whole thing goes.
So, I come back to the idea of, could you make the showroom one of these SunSpace rooms?
I have four different models. Could I use one of the models? Yes. Is it the model that I would, that I would use for the showroom? No. Because the model that sells the best is a three-season room, not a four-season room.
Okay.
So, i- if I was gonna build a showroom, I'd have to build... So i- if I was gonna build a showroom, I'd have to build a four-season room, but that's even more money, that's an average of forty to fifty thousand dollars per sale, that's your average customer, that's out of the reach, and the one that sells the most is the thirty thousand dollar one. And there's, I'm not gonna go into features, but there's so many features on it, that that's the most popular one.
I'm trying to help you out here, 'cause you kinda just contradicted yourself. You kinda said that you need the displays to sell them, 'cause it's been proven that people can visualize themselves in it, but you have four different units, and you're not using two of them.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, actu- actually, right, the displays I have show the options, uh, one of the displays shows the options for all four, that's the eight-by-fourteen, okay? The bulk of that display is, in order to quote numbers, try and make it like easy to explain it, we have a one-hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred, and four-hundred. In the, the one-hundred is just screens, the two-hundred has a vinyl window, and that's the majority of that display, which is the one that sells the best. The three-hundred is a glass sliding window, so I have one panel that is, shows the glass sliding, and the four-hundred has insulated glass sliding, which I have one panel of that, so they can still get the feel of the other rooms and see the difference between it.
Which of the two that you have now?
The, I have, the, the two-hundred is the eight-by-fourteen with the other two samples in it, and the others' display I have has a, it shows a different roof system on it.
Could you make your showroom the four-season, and then put a wall for each of the other three models in a section of the roof of the other models?
It's, it's not big enough, it, it, the room's not big enough, I've got two hundred and fifty-six square feet to, to do it in. I mean, that's basically, you know, a, a bedroom. I mean, your bedroom's probably bigger than that, I mean, that's fourteen-by-eighteen space, and, I mean, how can you put a table in there to have a conference of people, have rail displays, fence displays, two-hundred, four-hundred, three-hundred displays, as well as all the colors and different things that go with it, it's just not enough space.
I'm just saying it's all in the size of the piece, right? You're, you're thinking you need to show them the big piece, I'm saying you're trying to show them the design, and the design doesn't necessarily have to be a big piece.
They have, they have to see the full thing or visualize it on their house. I could show them pieces and parts, I go to their home, and I have pieces and parts to take with me, but until they actually sit, stand in the thing or sit in the thing, they can't visualize.
So one before, so it, it doesn't seem like any progress is gonna be ma- being made in this direction, so, uh, honestly, the options are, um, we can make an amendment to the, uh, make an amendment to the motion stating that, uh, the appeal is allowed, however, no portable s- displays can be, the two portable displays have to go, and either the showroom gets built as one, or the greenhouse stor- greenhouse storage encapsulates one, but that's a, that's a problem for us, a challenge that'd be decided by the applicant. What we can do now is that we can approve this without the displays as a, um, as a,
Contingent?
A contingent, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
But that's not the application, he's saying he's not changing his application.
I, I understa- and I...
No, it d- it doesn't matter if he changes his application or not.
The motion that I made, the motion that I made was to move the displays backwards, and the board is indicating that will not pass. So we could vote that up and down, knowing that it's not gonna pass, or you can amend that motion to something that may pass, or may not pass.
Can, I'm sorry, can we amend this, even though he's saying he doesn't want, he won't do it without...
We can, we can put whatever conditions we want on it.
Right, it says, it says, "We can approve it without the displays," is his choice whether or not he can run with it or not.
Does that provide an extra burden, though, on the town, that now suddenly, they're suddenly kind of regulating this business that is, we've cut off half his business, we're saying, "Go display," do you mean?
That, that's the choice of the board.
That's something that, if we made that decision, the town would have to enforce.
I, I think we've changed his applications a lot, and I think, you know, we've just discussed it, I think he, he's made his point, he wants to submit his application with, with the displays, and he's further explained why he needs the displays, and I think we need to vote on the application as, with this contingency that Rick is asserting.
We, we've pretty much exhausted this as much as we can. I mean, we can change it, and we can look at that, if that's not something that's gonna work for you, it's probably not something that I wanna put the town in the burden of going and enforcing. If, if we put those, "No displays" on there, if that's not gonna work for your business, then it's not, Ms. Shoup's right, it doesn't make any sense to do it.
Let me ask you a question. I've got these two portable displays that I take to shows, and what am I supposed to do with them?
Well, there's been all kinds of options, one was the storage...
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is...
No, I mean, you might have to re- find a spot to rent to put them on. No, I'm just, I, that, that can happen.
I, sir, we're really trying to work with you here, I mean, if, if there's no way around the displays, I don't think it's gonna happen.
I think at this point, we just have to vote, so just call the question.
We've had a motion, we've had a second.
All of them, sorry.
Would you like this, eh? I can give it up to you if you want. Okay. You got seven months before that happens.
So the motion on the table was to move the front display behind the greenhouse and leave the second display in position that is partially blocked by the showroom.
Correct. All those in favor of approving appeal number twenty-six thirty-four with the information from performance standards and as presented, as also for home occupations, that's been reviewed by the board?
Favor?
One opposed, four, doesn't pass, I'm sorry, sir. Anybody more to comment for us this evening, Mr. Loizel?
Uh, I do not have any, any board comments left. Uh, we still now have a, a big conce for another alternate, so if anybody knows anyone that's interested in getting involved in the zoning board group, they should put an application into the town, certainly, certainly be excited to have that position filled.
Yes, we'd love to have one more member in here table fill, that would be great. Any other comments? Anyone?
Who, who, Karen?
Second? Second, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Yeah, so you can take that with you, or you can put it back in your binder, whatever works, and I'll go through the...
You want it to go back in your binder?
Oh, yeah.
The last one.
That's fine.
And Karen? Twenty-nine best bird, keep her there. Twenty-nine best bird.
Yeah. Yes, please.
I gave it to her for away.
I'm glad I'm the only one tonight.
I don't care, I'm wel- I'm willing to give up the chair.